And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor? As we stand and we say the pledge, perhaps after the pledge, we can have just a moment of silence to remember longtime city employee Harry Granger, insurance risk manager who passed away last Wednesday. So circus is where today. I think it'd be nice to honor him and his family. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reese.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Corn present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Need a second?
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reese.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
I'd like to ask that our comptroller Angela Gray join us. Counselor Fisher is going to leave. Yes, he is. He's moving. Okay. Are you in chair? Thank you.
Sure.
That's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
For compliments.
Yeah. There you go.
It's...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. I'm very well there. Please let me know. Okay. Thank you.
That's fine. Give me my hat.
Yes. I knew you were on the way. Gee. It's... It's... It was really good. You know, I'm... Yes. 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 It's... I'm not talking to you. See? So... (coughs) It's... It... God. It's... 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 So... She... Yes. Well... Yeah. She... 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 So... So there's a... She... 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 She's... She's... So... I want you to... She... 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 So... So I'm gonna initiate a vote here. She's... I'm... So... She... So I'm gonna... I just... She... That's... She... Oh. Well, I'm very certain. I... I have permission. So... But... She... 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 Maybe... I just... Hey. Okay. Hey. Where is this? So I think her state is... We should... And... No, our school. So yeah. She... So... So... In... Those are... (laughing) We don't... (laughing) So... So... That's... Which... So... It's... So... It... Yes. So... She... I'm... I see. Yes. Yeah. She. 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 Yeah. So. Yeah. Gosh. Should they say you're handsome, but. Yeah. So. Sorry. I hope. The. Yeah. It's. 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 Yes. Shh. So. I. Check. So. 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 It's. She. What. Yes. So. Okay. Um. They're. I think he's fine. So. We're. So. So. She. Okay. Okay. So. So. Yeah. Okay. So. I'm. I'm. She. It's. So. Speaking. Yeah. Just. Speaking. So. I'm. Saying. Yeah. So. 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 Yeah. Yeah. So. So. Thanks. So. So. Very. Okay. Actually. See. Okay. That's. She. Okay. Here. So. See. So. She. She. So. She's. She. She. So. I don't. She. So. I would. I. So. So. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So. Those. So. 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 It's. I. We. This. It's. She. Time. For. She. So. She. So. 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 She said. She's. Her. I wish. I. Same. Well, you better clarify. On the same. This is. You're. For. So. Okay. So. Uh. He's. It. Okay. So. Sorry. First. See. It's. It's. Jesus. Okay. So. So. This is. Boy. She. She. It's. Baby. So. So. She. So. Yeah. I'll make. These. So. We're. This is. So. So. I. Today. So. 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 She. So. Show. Don't. Yeah. So. So. Like. Oh. Yeah. So. That's. Maybe. So. I'm. It's. Yeah. Or. I think. She. So. Good. Yeah. Yeah. So. This is. This is. But. We're. So. It's. So. Thank. It. Is. This is. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. This. She. So. 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 I got. I see. What. I think. She. So. I. Yeah. So. This was. So. She. Yeah. Yeah. So. I think. I think. Your. She. I. It's. Same. Yeah. So. It's. Why. She. Yeah. So. She. She's. You can. Yeah. So. Is it? So. She's. So. So. She. So. She's. She. She's. Last. Three. So. She. She's. She's. Actually. She. They. So. Only. Yeah. I'll. Say. But. I. That. She has. Her. She. I want. She. Yes. She never. The. So. I should. Yeah. So. She. So. So. It's. To. So. It's. Process. So. She. 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 So. She. So. Why. Bye. Done. This. She. She. So. 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 She. This. She. Got. Yeah. That's. We. Said. So. She. I. So. So. You guys. But. You're. Since. Yes. Yes. So. So. She. This. Since. I. So. There's. So. She. Is. Yeah. So. I'm. She. So. I was. So. She. 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 So. I. What's. She. 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 Six. So. 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 She. She. Said. So. First. So. It's. I mean. I just have. So. So. She. 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 So. She. It's. Sure. Yeah. So. Yeah. It's. It's. So. 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 It's. Alright. I. I. Fight. She. She. She's. She's. She. So. Yeah. She. She. Right. It's. So. She. So. Do. You. Last. You. It's. Body. Yeah. So. She. She. I don't. She's. She. Yeah. Very. Oh. I want. Just. Yeah. She. Well. Part. Um. She. 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 Look. She. Yeah. She. Was. Yeah. She. She. At. That. She. All. She. And. I'm. She. She's. Yeah. So. She's. So. She. So. I. You. So. This. If. You. Well. You. So. I had. This. But. She. She. I. I. I'm. She. Yeah. So. She. She. Yeah. I'm. So. I'm. I don't. So. I don't. I. So. She. She. Wow. You. So. Yeah. Yes. You. So. 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 It's. So. Which. I. Forget. So. You. It's. So. 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 It's. I'm. Well. We. Very. I'm. I'm. Because. She. She. Is. This. We. She. I. I. She. She. Has. The. She. Said. She. She. So. She. 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 I. I. Yeah. She. I. She. And. So. Yeah. Also. I. That's. My. This. I. It's. Yeah. A lot. Of. Which. Is. She. But. It's. This. So. If. Ready. She. Also. Okay. So. First. She. She. I. I. She. Says. Next. She. 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 Yeah. So. Pretty. It's. Pretty. Pretty. Yeah. So. So. She. About. Yeah. So. I. So. I. She. Yeah. Sometimes. She. 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 Yeah. She. 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 People. Please. She. She. Yeah. She. She. Yeah. I'm. So. She. 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 Yeah. So. I. So. So. Of. I. I do. So. This. I'm. I think. I don't. It's. Just. Yeah. I. This. 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 There.
But it's. Yeah.
Oh.
It's. This needs to be. Actually. Yeah. My. If. It's. You. The. Oh. So. Yeah. Me. Me. Um. Yeah. I mean. That's. So. You're. Sure. Really. Uh. Okay. You're not. No. It's. Oh. It's. You. Yeah. I got. She. It's. So. So. This is. So. They. So. Was. Yeah. Yeah. So. I've been. Pushing. So. I'm. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. And then. Of course. Me. Yeah. Yeah. She. Okay. My. Oh. Wow.
So. So. John. Just. Please. Just. So.
I. It's. It's. It's.
So.
He.
This is.
I can't. This is. Two. She. To.
So. She. But.
I.
Which is. So. Watch. She. Since. I. So. Yeah. She's. Yeah. Yeah. Like. They. She. So. I just. Like. A lot. With. A lot. Of. That. That's.
Getting. Charge.
You're. This. This. She's. Well. We. I think. I know. The whole. Just. This. I think. It's. I see. Yeah. So. It's. She. It's. So. Well. It's. So. I see. She's. I have. Tried. This. There. First. Yeah. Just. She. Is. She. I. She. She's. So. Yeah. It's. I. Two. Yes. Yes. Yeah. So. You. Basically. I was. That one. Goes. But. Jesus. Your. Life. It's. Seven. That's. Jesus. And. That. First. And. Carrots. I'm. Or. She's. I don't. So. I. I get. So. Yes. Yes. She's. She's. Yes. And. Very. Good. Um. Cars. She. She's. 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 Yeah. So. So. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. She. It's. I. But. It's. But. It's. So. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. I. Yeah. You. But. So. Okay. So. This. I. I. So. Yeah. And. So. She. Oh. Basically. All. The. Same. She. It's. She. I'll. I'll. First. In. She. She. For. So. I like. He wants. So. Someone. One. You. I. And. I. She's.
So. Also. She.
This. Is. My. This is. That's all. You want. For. You.
Oh.
See. This. That. Also. It's.
Yeah. I can't. Swing. Pretty. I didn't. On.
Holy. Oh. Oh. What's that? Oh. It wasn't. Okay. Yeah. That's. Okay. My. Okay. It's. Yeah. If. Three. Because. See. It's. Really. Is. One. Oh. That's. It's. It's. Probably. So. I'm. I'm. Saying. My. Part. So. I see. That. That's. So. See. So. I'm. First. Are. They. Are. Be. So. Let's. Thank. I think. It's. I look. Then. Awesome. So. So. She. So. It's. This. So. She. So. Um. So. 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 Okay. So. So. She. So. And. So. Any. I'm. It's. I'm. It's. It's. You. No. You. Eight. We're. Just. They're. In. Oh. So. She's. So. No. No. You. That. Right. It's. 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 Like. It's. Yeah. So. Um. It. Turning. To. So. It's. 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 And. So. Please. So. So. It's. The. I think. It's. So. So. Sure.
Oh. So. You.
I see. It's. I don't. Please.
So. So. You. Okay. That's. Yeah. So. It's. I would. So. That. So.
I'm. Yeah.
So. It's. It's. We. Oh. I'm. Ah. Sure.
That's. All right. I don't. Know.
Okay.
It's. It's. My. So. I think. I'm. But. It's. I don't. Oh. It's. 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 Oh. It's. Ah. It's. It's.
So. The. Well. First.
Did.
You. It's.
Not.
Yeah.
John.
Right. Now. So. That's. It's. Oh. I. So. Yeah. So. It's. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's. It's. I mean. It's.
Yes. We.
It's.
Yeah. Like.
So. Why. Jesus.
It.
So. Wow. They. It's. It's. So. So. I don't. It's. I. So. I'm. It's. I don't. I'm. Yes. It's. She. Right. Yeah. So. It's. This. Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay.
So.
It's.
It. Well. How.
I'm.
It's.
So. Yes. So. 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 This. Yeah. This. She. Yeah. Right. So. So. It's. So. She. This. So. Yeah. It's. This. So.
Yeah.
You. That's. The. This.
So.
So. It's. Yeah. So. It's. It's. So. So. Okay. That. It's. It's. So. She. Not. It's. It's. We. What. This. So.
Yeah. It's. She. We. Can. But. She. But. For. It's. I. She. But. That. Okay. You. So. Yes. You.
You.
Yeah.
That's. That's.
That's. He said.
It's.
Thanks. Good. Mother. I'm. Did. They. I think. Here.
Steve back?
He was on the video. He is there. Yes, Mayor, he's there.
Okay. Let the record reflect that upon returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. We have two presentations tonight. The first is regarding the 2021 audit.
Mark Mashaw from Pinto Hooper Muszinski Van House is here to present the 2021 audit summary. And for the benefit of those attending remotely, the handout that Mr. Mashaw is speaking from is attached to the webinar and it has been provided to members of the public as well here. This is excerpts from the audit which was included in the packet that was put out on Friday. So, Mr. Mashaw.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
We're going to do kind of a high level look at the audit for 2021, which is what we've found in the past years, because the auditor committee sat down with us a couple of weeks ago and went through this kind of line by line, page by page. So if there's any questions, we can go through that with other people also, but that's where we're kind of starting from. The audit sections, the audit hasn't really changed too much from prior years. You still have an independent auditor's report. That provides our opinion on your financial statements. There's a management's discussion and analysis section, and that provides some comparative schedules for the numbers. It's the only place there is comparative schedules, so that's a good place to look if you're looking from one year to the next. The financial statements themselves is in that section. There's two sets of financials. There's government-wide financials, which includes all of your long-term assets and liabilities. And there's fund financial statements, which only include your current assets and liabilities and your budgeting numbers. Then after that, the notes, the financial statements, which provides some nice detail for the numbers that are within the financial statements, capital asset tables, debt tables, things like that, that shows the activity from the start of the year to the end of the year. Then we have required supplementary information to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, some other supplementary information. And then finally, because this is an audit in accordance with the government auditing standards, there's a final report on internal control and compliance. A summary of the independent auditor's report, that's our report to you. That report is a clean, unmodified opinion, which basically says that the statements you gave us are materially, materially correct in all manners. That audit report is a new format this year. Just to give you a heads up, the auditing standards board came up with a new format to be in convergence with international standards and to try to make this more reader-friendly. So there's a couple of new things in the audit report. We refer to the city's ability to continue as a going concern. That means will you be here a year from now?
Will they be able to hear Mark if he's not speaking right into the mic?
Check, check.
I just want to make sure the public can hear you.
Thank you, John. There's also some language about fraud detection, and there's also some language about our professional skepticism when we ask questions and gather evidence. These are new reporting items in the audit, but they're not new auditing concepts. So these things have been around forever. We've been auditing these things, but this is the first time you kind of see those items in writing. So nothing to be alarmed with those. The management's responsibility, same as it was in prior years, that's the issue of the audit reports, or the audit, or the financial statements, I should say, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and to monitor and develop internal controls and checks and things like that. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements, and as I said, is a clean audit opinion, where we believe the financial statements are materially presented in all material respects correctly. That is our audit report. On the next page here is a very summarized balance sheet of your fund-wide statements. We have columns here for the general fund, the special revenue, and the capital. And you'll see your assets and liabilities, there's really no new lines or any new assets or liabilities to speak of. This year you have total assets of $7.9 million, your general fund, and total liabilities of $1.8 million, leaving you with a fund balance of $6.1 million at the end of the year. Couple of things that happened this year. One, in the general fund, you'll see there's a liability due to other governments. In the prior year, that number was $2 million. This year it's only $600,000, and that's because there was a substantial payment made to the county to cover back taxes that haven't been collected. So those receivables are still on the books, but you no longer have the liability because it's been paid in cash in 2021. And over in the capital fund, you'll see the no payable number of $22 million. That number is up from about $18 million the prior year, and that's for the sewer project, because you took on new debt of about $4.7 million in the capital. Okay, and the next page shows your statements of revenues and expenditures, which kind of lines up your income and your expenses. So you'll see the general fund had revenues of $15 million and expenses of $13 million. So the revenue over expenses this year was $1.7 million. And then after some internal transfers, the general fund had a bottom line of $2.1 million. So you see, add that $2.1 million to the previous fund balance of $4 million, gives you your year-end fund balance of $6.1 million. So you're healthier at the end of 2021 as opposed to 2020. And just for comparative sake, I believe 2020 had a bottom line of about $1.4 million. So you had two, two nice positive years, accounting-wise there. Those are the numbers, our last couple of reports that are included with your audit. One is the required communications. These are items that we specifically, specifically have to communicate to those in charge of governance. When those are new auditing standards, they weren't done in 2021. COVID's kind of slowed down any new standards being issued, so there was nothing new in 2021. There are accounting estimates. You have your accrued pension and most retirement benefits, those are determined by an actuary, and there's a lot that goes into that number, so that's a big estimate on the books. You have your valuation of receivables that are uncollected, and you have your useful lives of fixed assets, how long things are going to last and be of benefit to the city. Those are all estimates in the numbers. As far as difficulties in performing the audit, we had none. Uncorrected misstatements, there weren't any. There were a few minor adjustments that we made, nothing too material, and those have been posted and agreed with. No disagreements with management. Management presentation letter has been signed, and there were no consultations with other independent accountants who received a clean opinion, so that's really not applicable. Or if we gave you a poor opinion, then you could go to another accountant to see why that is, but that's really not applicable here. And the last report is a report on internal control and compliance, and that has to do with your government auditing standards. It's a dual-purpose report. The first looks at internal controls. We assess your internal controls, your daily, your monthly, your annual internal controls, and we found no material weaknesses, so that we have no recommendations there. And as far as compliance, that means compliance with grants and contracts and other third parties, and we found no issues with your compliance either, so no issues of non-compliance. So that, in a nutshell, is kind of the audit for 2021.
Yeah, very good, very good. This was a good year for the city, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you. Any questions? We're always available if you think of any later also.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
When we met with the audit committee and the auditors, on page 55, under insurance reserve fund, there's a fund balance of $799,838. I would be interested in seeing more detail on that and how it gets replenished. I think you said water and sewer fund replenishes it, and how much our annual liabilities could be with, you know, if there's an insurance claim, just for future reference.
We can get that for you, counsel.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is a ready update.
Good evening, counsel. Provided was a worksheet that we've seen before. We've had this on the previous agendas that summarizes the series of projects contained in what's known as the Ready Project. This project began in 2019 with funding from the New York State, and the total project cost, as you can see in column one, is now estimated to be $12.5 million. Nothing different than we've been discussing regarding this project. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to sort of update you on the financing for this project. We have committed to the work. The work is underway. Counsel has previously, on three separate occasions, approved financing for this. First time on December 13th, 2020, well, let me go back, the first time in November 2020, there was a ban issued for $415,000, which represented 5% of your match on this grant. Since then, change in cost, change in scope, contracts are in. On 12/13/2021, council authorized borrowings of 1.3 million, and I'm going to round all these numbers. To 14/2022, council authorized almost $1.9 million. And on November 28th, 2022, council authorized an additional $1 million. The total financing outside of that initial 5% match is $4,188,027. So again, these have all been authorized. The resolution that you have for council action tonight brings all of this full circle and asks for five affirmative votes to do the bond ordinance and start the borrowing on that project. So in that bond ordinance will be in the amount of $4,188,000 and change to mirror what council has already committed to for borrowing on this project. Any questions?
No, just a lot of cost increases, a lot of, a lot of changes arisen, and not at the best time, you know? While our audit was great for 2021, it's, things are changing quickly for our city. So, yeah, but we've committed to this, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to personal appearance at this time. Anyone attending in person would like to address counsel, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Sean O'Brien. I'm the current undersheriff here in St. Lawrence County. I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Brooks Bigworf. We've had some discussions with county legislator Jim Reagan. He represents the city of Augsburg for the county. And as we go through life, I've seen and I've heard a lot of things, and I just want the record to reflect that there's been some concern, not only from the citizens of Augsburg, but the greater Augsburg area, as well as some of the city employees, including those at the police department. And I'm here tonight just to clarify for the record that the sheriff is elected by everyone that's a citizen of this county. He's an independent constitutional officer of the state of New York. He doesn't have to, you know, he certainly garners his support from his constituency, and he is not beholden to county legislators, city council, or anyone else. So I've had some great discussions with Sheriff Bigworf, that's why I'm here this evening, but it's been come to our attention that there's a lot of misinformation going on. And I just here, and I'm not here in an adversarial way, in any way, shape, or form, but I want to make sure that the record is truly reflected on what Sheriff Bigworf and undersheriff O'Brien have to say. And that is, we fully support the Augsburg Police Department. This county is the largest county in the state of New York, and it takes an exorbitant amount of personnel to cover, provide, and protect the citizens of this great county. With that being said, there's this maybe misunderstanding or misinformation that the sheriff and/or the county is potentially, I don't know, negotiating, or whatever the word you may use, to try to circumvent the services that your great police departments provides. And I just want that record to be reflected, that that is not the case, and that we are fully supportive of the Augsburg Police Department. They're great law enforcement partners, and we continue to cherish that relationship that we have with them. If they need something, they know to call, but we also need them. And what do we need them with? Well, we need them on many levels. One, the citizens of this city need them, because the response time that the sheriff's office could provide you is nowhere near the response time that the city police department could provide you. But we also need them because we are faced with a major drug epidemic that we're all well aware of. I'm sure we, you know, we all face it in certain levels, some level, every day. And our drug task force is only as good as the team that we built. And I have to be honest with you, Augsburg is one of those municipalities that's been able to contribute over the course of my career, nearly two decades, to being able to do that. And I understand the predicament that many of your counselors have to go through, and I understand the budget. I'm not, I'm not going to turn a blind eye to that. But I just want you to understand and realize that we're here to fully support them, and we need to continue to be proactive. And I, you know, would ask, and the sheriff would ask, any time that there is an And I, you know, would ask, and the sheriff would ask, any time that there is an extra penny or two, that you would give uh, some thought and consideration to adding to the drug task force and/or the detectives. Because they're really, they, they know your community better than just as mu- much as the next person. Matter of fact, they probably know it best. They see it day in and day out, much better than any sheriff's deputy could because obviously their responsibilities are, you know, on the larger side of the county. So I, I don't, like I said, I don't want to be adversarial in any way, but I also wanted the record to reflect and the sheriff wanted the record to reflect. And legislator Jim Reagan, I had, I can't speak for him, but you can more than happy, he said, you know, anybody that wants to call him. Uh, he is the county legislator that represents the city of Augsburg. And we want to continue to have a good partnership and establish that trust. Thank you.
Sean, uh,
Yes, sir.
You, you just saw our, our audit.
Yeah.
And it was quite amazing. You can see our, our city was on the verge of recovery. It being able to maintain our, our police department, starting the process of cleaning up our waterfront, be able to add property tax in the future. And um, this was all told to the, during the sales tax negotiations to the county. It was all told to them what would happen, all our, our departments. And um, you know, we've lost two million dollars. That, that's, that's our problem right now. We've lost two million dollars. So how do you keep the police, the fire and everybody else with two million dollars less? That's, that's our problem. If that-
And I understand that, sir. I, I'm not here to debate, you know, those are decisions that you have to make as a council. All I'm here for tonight is to say that we fully support the Augsburg Police Department. And, you know, we, we need them.
I, I agree, and we do too. We're just trying to figure out how we support our city with two million dollars less. It's really an unfortunate thing that uh, you know, there really not, were no negotiations. Uh, we're taking two million dollars.
I, I understand, sir. I'm not trying to be disrespectful towards you or your office. I'm just, I'm just being straight up honest because that's the type of person that I am and that the sheriff is, so.
I just wanted to put it out there on record that, you know, this is what we're facing and this is why we're facing it. But, but thank you.
I understand. And, and just let the record reflect that I did have a brief conversation with your interim city manager. She's been fully, you know, cooperative about that, and as well as the police chief. If there's any other further concerns, I understand that I'm under personal appearance and my timer is already up and I'm going to leave. But if there's any other concerns, and, and it goes for the residents of the city of Augsburg or any of the employees, please feel free to reach out because we're going to, we're going to get to you straight. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, Mike. Excuse me, Mike?
Yes?
Um, I just liked to, for the public's uh, knowledge also, um, legislator Reagan does represent Augsburg, but so does Chair Forsyte. He also represents Augsburg. We forgot him.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
Just your light foot.
He's not, he doesn't represent Augsburg.
Hi, uh, just hearing Mr. O'Brien talk here, I think uh, him and Mr. Bigworf are kind of nicely trying to say to you is that the sheriff's office won't be bullied into having to patrol Augsburg by a local government, is I think basically what they were trying to say. Uh, that aside, last meeting, I was disappointed you wouldn't all vote on the independent uh, grant writer for the fire department. I think ten thousand dollars is chump change. I understand where you stand on the budget, the size of the department, the contract that was passed. But if it could save it, that grant money could save it during the duration of the contract, at least until a new one could be written. Or maybe even, God forbid, prove he's wrong and save the department altogether. Ten grand is a very small gamble, especially with some of the money I've seen with change orders on some of these construction projects and some stuff that was done down by the park and then tore down shortly after, so it could be redone again. Just money's been spent that could have covered that. Another interesting thing, a, a small amount of money like that could probably be raised by the community without even the city even having to flip the bill. That's another thing that could have possibly happened for a shot at a grant of that much money. Uh, the lady seems to be pretty successful when our own grant writer recommended using her. And uh, you know, the fire chief and other people, I think it just would have been a good idea, a shot in the dark for yous. Uh, the next thing I'd like to talk about is last meeting, uh, councillor Fisher stated that, um, first of all, he said he'd hate to bring this up, but he stated that uh, all the resolutions in here are supposed to be uh, revised by the city attorney for their legality before they're brought forth to council. And this hasn't been done. I reached out to the city management and I didn't get a hundred percent, percent straight answer, but I would assume that a lot of the uh, crazy resolutions that have come forward during the jelly administration were indeed not legal on their face, which was why this hasn't been done. And it kind of helped the city attorney keep his hands clean of that stuff. If it says it in the charter, we should do it, or we should change the language to the charter to say what requires whether or not one should be reviewed by the city attorney. And I'm sure it might have been done in some cases to save money. It's probably not always necessary, but it's something to think about. Uh, I also spoke here last time and I was called a liar and stuff about some stuff that, that happened to me last summer. And uh, it's all true. Um, I reached out to the city management here. And I was told I needed to be, hand in like some type of written formal letter saying, I want this investigated. I find that kind of troubling because I still haven't handed anything in. I've been to I don't know how many meetings and, and I kind of tried to bring this to light and speak about it. And it was never handled. Now we have a new manager. It still seems to not really want to be handled. I shouldn't have to hand anything in. He knows this took place. And uh, I mean, we're all in the same room together if it's that complicated, you know? Mayor called me a liar. Mr. Kearns, do you want to say who told you to kick me out of here in July at the council meeting? No. Well, to me, that's a real good example that there's some corruption that's going on. And this poor man has to sit here and protect himself because he's sworn over to the constitution. So is this going to get looked into at all, Andrea, or is it going to be investigated on my behalf as a citizen whose rights were violated by employees here? Are you on Steve Jelly's side about this? Or were you at all involved or the mayor?
We, we don't address-
Listen, I hate to bring this here, Mike, but I've tried, I have tried everything in my power.
The council as a whole.
Okay, well, I've tried everything in my power to get this handled. And there's a reason why I'm here. I didn't want to bring it to the council's doorstep. All right? So I just wanted to let everyone know, obviously clearly nothing's been done about it. And hopefully we can, instead of just continuing to sit here in silence, you keep rolling your eyes, but you know what happened? Still got nothing to say? I might quit coming here and doing this to you. If you man up and say something, just admit it. No? Okay, thanks. You've just proven yourself to be corrupt like you always have. Thanks, mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up to the podium?
Good evening, council. Jason Bouchard, three one four Oak Street. Tonight I'm here on behalf of uh, IFF seventeen ninety-nine. I'd like to thank Greg McNamara for addressing kind of, kind of almost piggybacks where I'm coming into. Um, as you guys heard a couple of meetings ago, uh, Chief Stall laid out a request. Um, obviously, we are struggling for people. We've been asking for them and we've applied for safer grants on multiple occasions. And we're looking for a little help. And I, we didn't think that ten thousand dollars was too much to ask, but we realized that the city is in pretty tough times. I keep getting told by everyone that I meet with Andrea, Angela, that this is a new group, a new way. We need to reestablish, rebuild this fire department from the ground up. Maybe not the way you guys want to, we want to, but somewhere in the humpty dumpty situation that we've created, shove us off the wall. Maybe we'll never get put back together in the same way, but we have to start brainstorming. So I sat down with our union this week. What do we need? We need bodies. Council is not going to make the decision, the fiscally responsible decision to hire people at a lesser cost, even though they're strapped for cash. Congratulations on the two thousand twenty-one audit. It was nice to hear it finally being presented in February of two thousand twenty-three. Now that we hear that you are doing so well and there's a lot of questions that can go that, I will decide not to look backwards. I will forget contract negotiations, contract violations, excuse me. I will forget the fact that we are working countless overtimes and being shamed into honoring the agreement that we've made with our city. Our group has come together and thought, how can we best go about getting these people? They're not going to hire people at lesser cost to the citizens. Even though by hiring, we are providing a better service at a cheaper cost. Now, we have decided that we are not going to apply for free firefighting, uh, free firefighters for at least three years. Now, we can say that we want to run a twenty-year analysis on the cost of these individuals. But the group that's sitting here had no problem eliminating eleven positions as I stand here today during their tenure. So those positions are nothing other than savings for the citizens if we are so lucky to get the grant. Now, how are we best off to do that? Our union came together unanimously, said we will pay the ten thousand dollars to retain her services as long as we have some assurances on our end. I was hoping to get in front of you guys for a, a formal presentation. But realistically, the trust doesn't exist between the two parties for us to say, let's not involve legal in this somewhere to make sure that our investment, and that's what it is, an investment on our, of our union's money in the city and the fire department. We are taking a pay cut if we hire people, each and every one of us, a significant pay cut. So if we are serious about having this kind of discussion, so many hypothetical deals have been floated back and forth during this administration. If we're serious about it and it's a council-approved deal that you guys would even consider applying for the safer grant and utilizing this grant writer and her expertise to benefit the fire department, we are more than happy to foot the bill. The only thing that we would ask is if you're serious about it, please reference my, go through the city manager, the interim city manager, and we can find out that our assurances are met as well. Because to hand you guys ten thousand dollars when you could really just laugh at us if anything was ever granted to us, doesn't seem like a smart investment. However, the sixteen of us in the union, the seventeen of us in the department are dedicated to rebuilding the department despite what's happened the last three years in a month and a half. So if you guys are serious about allowing this grant writer to help us, and according to councillor Fisher, the only real, I guess, drawback to it, the only prohibition was the cost, we are willing to foot that. If council is willing to think about the assurances on our end and what it can do to save the city money, to protect the city at a more efficient rate, and to help the members of our union not make more money, not express more greed, as has been characterized in the media multiple times by Ms. Smith's predecessor. But we can get back to protecting the city at an affordable rate. And you guys can recoup the savings and use them as you so desperately need the money. I ask that you consider this and please uh, go through Ms. Smith if you would, if this is something you guys would like to go through. If there's any questions, I'm in the back, but uh, we are more than willing to, to foot this during these times because it's worth it for the department, for the city.
So just to reiterate, you're suggesting that the fire department, the union-
Yes.
-is going to pay for the grant writer. If the resolution is brought forward and city council supports uh, the effects of that, should we get it, they would hire the, the forefiremen.
Well, I mean, we're not going to put a number on it at this point in time.
I don't think this is a place for negotiation.
I'm just, I want to, I want to clarify what he's saying.
This is for like items of negotiation.
I'm not negotiating, Mike. I'm asking him what he's saying here.
Negotiation.
Items for, I, I would say items for discussion or new business would be the place to bring this up and talks amongst yourselves. But I would not ask for you guys to put some sort of a vote out on this when there are assurances that are on that need to be met as well. I would like, and unfortunately, trust does not exist between the two sides, to not involve legal at some capacity if this is something that should interest uh, council.
I, I think that's a generous offer by the IFF. Uh, and, and I commend you, the union for that. But ultimately, at the end of the day, this is a conversation between firefighter association and, and the interim city managers. This, this talks continue.
Well, and, and I'm just, I'm just like-
No, I understand. I, i- it's a great presentation and it's very generous. It most certainly is. And, and I can surely see that myself personally, I can see the cost savings in it. But ultimately, this is uh, this is, you know, last thing we want is more litigation and, and, and other factors going back and forth. But it's a generous offer and I think that conversation needs to be had with management.
We hope to have it and uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, good evening. Michael Julie, two fourteen Hamilton Street, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Just a, a couple of questions or comments about uh, grant writing, history with the city or potentially for the future. Um, one, we're applying for grants. If they're within the grant applications allowance for indirect costs, are we taking advantage of that and factoring indirect costs into those grants? So in other words, uh, many of the grants that I helped write when I was working for public schools or that we were writing for the diocese had anywhere from ten to fifteen percent of the grant to be indirect costs, which means we could take ten to fifteen percent of administrative costs, administrative time, whatever, and move that off our books and charge it against the grant, thus saving, you know, the program's changing our operating budget, saving some operating budgets of money. So um, I'm just curious if we've taken advantage of indirect costs in grant applications in the past, A. And B, uh, if any grant going forward, and I don't know if the fire department grant is being referenced, might have an opportunity for indirect costs, but that might be another way to, if possible, to recoup some monies for the general fund budget. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Uh, anyone uh, attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
Uh, and this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number three dash two thousand twenty-three in the amount of five hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And library warrant number three dash two thousand twenty-three in the amount of zero dollars. And capital fund warrant number three dash two thousand twenty-three in the amount of nine hundred seventy-six thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. And community development warrant number three dash two thousand twenty-three in the amount of seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. And community renewal fund warrant number three dash two thousand twenty-three in the amount of zero dollars. As audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move.
One second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperey?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by interim city manager, uh, Angela Gray, or interim uh, city-
City controller.
Comptroller. I had, but you're not interim. I just had a mistake here.
Good evening. This is a resolution to approve the issuance of a bond ordinance in the amount of four million one hundred eighty-eight thousand twenty-seven dollars to cover the construction improvements to the parks and recreations areas, including the marina and docks. The bond ordinance is attached.
Can I move that?
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Reish?
I'm, I'm going to pass.
Abstain, sir, or vote no?
No, the charter says I can pass. You, you need five votes. I want to see how the vote goes. I have the ability to pass.
Understood. Councillor Scamperey?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
No.
Councillor Fisher?
Um, that's got the one point four million in it for the, for the sheeting in the front that nobody sent a diver in the water and we're getting tagged the taxpayers for, just to make sure.
That element, it has been approved and is under contract.
Okay, I agree, but I voted no on that the last time, so I'm voting no.
Councillor Kennedy?
They should have put a diver in the water. They should be sued.
Well, we could always open that up.
Well,
Well, we do have it out.
I, I think we'll save it, we'll- Save it for executive session.
Councillor Kennedy, just to clarify for the record, your vote again, please. That was yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
So yeah, I wanted to vote against it as well, just because of the, the cost. And I, I always thought it should have been built to the budget and I lost those arguments. And I wasn't in favor of the sheet piling, which is- And I wasn't in favor of the sheet piling, which is added costs on the marina side. But we have to, we have to pay for this, right? So I vote yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to an amendment to the administrative regulations.
I'll move that.
Second.
This almost seems like cleanup language, or what was the priority for?
So there is a lot of cleanup in here. The priority in what brought this to you is that the fees for the Dubisky Center are one of the last fees that are actually established in the code. If you look at most of the other, all of the other recreation facilities, the charter references that the council shall approve the fees on an annual basis. So we are recommending that this same language be included, and then this also just kind of cleans up some of the language that predates the practice of the city post-COVID and follows the policies that we have been following since 2020.
$500 security deposit seems kind of high. How'd they do it in the old days, Doug?
For the alcohol permit?
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah. So that's if you're having an event that you are providing alcohol at. We do require, and our code has required, a deposit for that. It's typically paid by separate check. We do hold that to secure any potential damages or cleanup that's required. And then that is returned in form typically to the individual renters following their event.
Okay, thanks.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with Brons Contracting LLC, bid number 2022-011.
Yeah, I'll move that.
Second.
And this is for demolishing a house at 309 Grant Street, which, can you give us the background on?
Sure. So there was a fire at 309 Grant Street that significantly damaged the structure of that property beyond repair. The property owner was ordered to demolish that unsafe structure in accordance with New York State law, specifically New York State IMPC 107.1.1, 1.3, and 1.4, which essentially declares the structure unsafe. It's very, very near to two properties, two properties, both north and south, and is in threat of failure. So the property owner has not complied with the order to demolish, and the city has the responsibility of completing that demolition and levying these fees back on the property.
So it's very close to the other two houses. Few feet, I would imagine, on either side. Very dangerous situation, so.
That's correct.
I don't know if there was a second.
Yes, yeah, there was.
Was it close to?
There's a house on both sides, and it's.
You could literally reach out and touch them.
It's hard to believe that, looking at the damage, it didn't burn the other two houses.
Didn't burn the whole block down. If you look at that whole block, they're all, they're all really close together.
Must have had a good fire to burn.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to accept the 2021 audit.
I'll move it.
Second. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
One quick, it's not related to this actual audit, but we've got RFPs out for accounting firms for the 2022?
Yes, we do, and we are, we have, the comptroller can tell you if you'd like, or I can send it to you in an email. We have sent specifically, it is open to anyone to bid on, but we have identified firms that do this work as far as Syracuse and Plattsburgh that got a direct invitation to bid.
Thank you.
So we do intend, Councilor, just to kind of follow up on that, to bring the response of that request for proposals to council at the March 13 meeting.
Wonderful.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Just for the benefit of the public, the audit which was included with the packet for this evening's meeting will be posted now that it's approved on the city's website and will be available tomorrow.
Thank you. I believe Council Scamperly would like to introduce the next item of business.
I would. Thank you. A resolution of the Augsburg City Council to commemorate the Battle of Augsburg reenactment, February 18th, 19th, 2023. Whereas the Augsburg City Council has been advised that the Augsburg and Prescott will jointly commemorate the War of 1812 Battle of Augsburg Weekend, February 18th, 19th, 2023. Whereas on Saturday, February 18th, 2023, reenactors from both communities will battle along the streets of Augsburg following a route similar to the one taken on the February 22nd, 1813 battle between the British and American forces as they fought their way to the fort at Lighthouse Point. Whereas the primary purpose of the War of 1812 Battle of Augsburg reenactment is to promote a more general awareness of the history of the War of 1812 throughout the state and among the citizens of the United States and Canada. And now therefore, the Augsburg City Council hereby encourages the residents of Augsburg to experience and look back into Augsburg's history and attend the War of 1812 Battle of Augsburg Weekend activities. I so move.
Second.
And I just, you know, when I was looking at this and writing it or helped adjust it, I guess, I did look up the Battle of Augsburg and threw a few facts down there about the major players in the war that I attached onto that. People can see the various groups. Here on the Augsburg side was US First Rifle Regiment under Major Benjamin Forsyte. And Forsyte's rifles, of course, asked us to support this. So support any historical reenactment here in Augsburg.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution to establish a task force dedicated to addressing state-owned, tax-exempt property within the city of Augsburg. Whereas the Augsburg City Council is dedicated to addressing problems and finding real solutions to current, to the current volume of state-owned tax-exempt properties in the city of Augsburg. And whereas the Augsburg Payment in lieu of Taxes Pilot Task Force shall be composed of three members of the governing body and appointed by resolution annually. And whereas the task force shall be a temporary body with the following goals. Number one, to garner political support in Albany for the approval of Senate Bill S9606. To allow state-owned property in the city of Augsburg to be subject to local real property taxation and state lands. State land in certain places within New York State is subject to property taxation. However, however, although the state of New York owns 30% of the land in Augsburg and much of it is unused, the city is not able to collect taxes on any of this land. Now therefore be resolved that the city, Augsburg City Council, appoints the following members to the Pilot Task Force.
This is, as you know, this is something that I proposed, and the task force was kind of privately proposed, but I'm glad you wrote a resolution for it. And I think there needs to be a couple of technical amendments. I've talked to Senator Walzick's, and, well, there isn't a bill this year, so Senate Bill 9606 doesn't exist anymore. So I'd like to amend it to say garner political support in Albany for the approval of a new bill. And that's my motion, unless, that needs to be done because, so we need to pass this resolution. It's a little premature because it doesn't have a bill number yet for this legislative session. But we can, with that amendment, we can approve it. And then this gets forwarded to Walzick's office. This week, they will generate a bill number. And then the following week, hopefully, or the following meeting, they'd like a home rule bill in support of that, that new bill in the Senate and Assembly that has a new number.
Oh, Steve, we have background noise. You can mute yourself, please.
I'd make a motion to amend that so we can get it through.
Would you be in favor of adding same-as language from S9606? To encompass, you know, it's basically, it's just a reintroduction. So when the bill expires at the end of the calendar year, they come in with a new bill, and it's basically same-as.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, of course, we can lobby to find an assemblyman to carry the same-as bill in the House of Assembly.
Yeah, he's already on board. I talked to him. All right, yeah. So that's fine, same-as.
I'll second it.
That's the one that we introduced last year, 9606 with Senator Ritchie, so that's fine.
So we're going to call roll on the amendment?
So this would be a roll called to amend. Did council intend to name the members on this amendment, or are you going to move that after?
Might as well complete it.
Yeah.
I'm happy to serve on it.
I'd be glad to. I was pushing for similar legislation years ago, and I'll get back on it.
Yeah.
Council Reish, Powers, and Scamperly?
Well, Steve, we're getting a lot of background noise unless you're going to speak.
I also think that there's a lot more issues that the task force needs to address. And I, but we can, we can discuss that with the task force. But there are other issues. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
So this is a roll called to amend. Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
And now a roll call, Mayor, if I may, as amended?
Yes, please.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reish?
Yes.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
This brings us to old business, and.
I've asked to have this placed on the agenda to renew the bill number eight from the January 23 meeting, which I was absent from, through being able to renew the bill for casting a ballot. The resolutions authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a contract with Titan Roofing Incorporated. Whereas the city of Augsburg solicited bids to replace the roof at 2330 Ford Street, also known as City Hall, request bids numbers 2022-008. Whereas Titan Roofing Incorporated Massachusetts Corporation, having offices in Springfield, Massachusetts, has proven their capacity and ability to perform the work to the city's satisfaction. Whereas Titan Incorporated has the ability and capacity to complete the work within the schedule specified in the bid documents. Now therefore be resolved that the interim city manager designee is authorized to enter into a contract with Titan Roofing Incorporated for a sum not to exceed $396,220 for the replacement of this roof at City Hall. Be it further resolved that expenses for this project be charged to account code A1620 period 330 period. I so move.
I'll second.
Any efforts to seek grant funding? Any update on, I think you were talking to Rural Development?
I did reach out to Rural Development. I looked through their programs, and I spoke directly to their program manager. The roof would, may qualify for loan funding through their community development program, but not likely to qualify for grant funding. The rate does change. Right now, the interest rate is 3.75. It's established at the time of closing, so it could change. But it doesn't typically fluctuate too much throughout the year. So the rate right now is 3.75.
Not unlike a, not unlike a bond rate? Generally speaking, though. What? Well, go ahead.
There is presently a Preserve New York grant that is open. But projects, that particular funding source does not fund bricks and mortar projects like a roof or any building improvement. It instead funds, if we needed to do an engineering assessment, for example, it would fund that, but it does not fund the actual implementation of a roof, so on a historic structure. So we are looking at that grant avenue for some work that needs to be done at the pump house, but this particular project is not eligible for that.
Which, which account is this, 1620.330, what account is that? Where are you pulling the money?
I believe, Councilor, that is City Hall, but I will tell you specifically. That is City Hall, building expenses and building maintenance.
How much was in that account?
We would likely bring a funding resolution so as not to deplete the general fund for this if, if in fact council does award it. But ultimately, the funding would, would be transferred into that line and paid out of it.
Okay.
Somebody speak to the condition of the roof.
The roof, I believe in your packet I did provide for you last time, the history of the roof. I don't have that in front of me now, but I believe that it is, I believe it's in excess of 20 years old. Maybe the Director of Public Works can recommend that. But I can also put that in this week's update, the actual details of it.
Just some sort of assessment chain?
I think it was put out in the 90s.
It really needs to be replaced.
Yeah, as you can see in your media room eight back there, in the back room. It's leaking through the roof, yeah. We've had, it's been leaking before, but it's been patched. Last probably 10 years it's been bad. It's not in good shape.
We did in 2021, the former city manager did fund a building assessment of City Hall. This was the paramount recommendation in terms of things to advance forward.
Then the heating and cooling system would be next. We can provide that report if you'd like us to.
I think it's a no-brainer. I mean, we could have to have a city hall.
Also, as we've discussed with council in the past, the New York State court system is located on the second floor, and they would help pay for the roof. We anticipate that their contribution would be in the $40,000 to $45,000 range based on this price.
Good. Very good.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Reish?
Now I'm going to vote no again for what it's worth, because I just thought that it just showed up on our agenda with, it doesn't matter, it's a vote.
Council Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillaba?
No.
Council Fisher?
No.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Does anyone else have any old business?
I'm not sure, but that's probably qualifies as old business. It's more of a discussion, but I'll go with it. The city's making the switch to the LED streetlights. That's still something, for now, we're working. That's still something we're working towards. The lights at the Kiwanis Field are owned by the city of Augsburg. Are they included in that LED switch?
They are not included in that. We just got confirmation on that today.
Today? And could we possibly get a cost on what it would cost to switch those lights over if the organization was willing to pay for it themselves? Would that be possible to get that for the lights that are there?
We can certainly look at that.
Okay.
Does anyone have any new business?
Well, business.
You still on hold?
The Vactor truck. Are there any grant opportunities for that that you've identified or? I I'm curious whether or not some of the federal money approved for water and sewer, which was an emphasis. If there's any programs that make equipment that maintain water and sewer are eligible. And I'm I'm happy to do a little research on it. I don't know if anybody's looked into it yet.
The same USDA funds are applicable. Again, it would, I mean, it would qualify for a grant loan combination. We have talked to them about it. The federal funding, I mean, I just participated in a webinar last week for that and I don't have the answer to that. I don't have like a hard yes or a hard no. Most of the funding that I'm aware of right now is there may be something in the details where equipment might be an eligible expense. I'll have to more looking into it. It's generally for roads, bridges and distribution collection systems.
Yep. And what about the restructuring board? Is that a thing that we could propose to them to help us with?
I don't. I mean, I'm sure we can ask them. I don't think that that's something that's specifically in their recommendations, but I don't think that we're prohibited from asking.
Well, they said we're too reliant on water and sewer general fund, so they help us out. We should ask, was that four hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand?
Eight.
Five hundred? Yeah, I just like the City Hall roof. I think we we should, given our current financial situation, we should do everything we can to identify outside sources.
Any new business for anyone? Items for discussion?
So to complement the resolution to amend the administrative regulations, I did include for you all the proposed fee structure for the Debisky Center as well as all of our other recreational facilities, which we would ask for adoption. This would be formalized at your twenty seventh meeting along and following the public hearing on the proposed language changes. So of note, there are fees that are being proposed for the pool as we discussed through the budget as well as updated fees for the Debisky Center. And I guess really the big changes there, we are increasing the costs pretty minimally, which just goes along with covering our costs associated with increased hourly rates for our staff. But going back to the structure that we had pre COVID where we will allow the small and large meeting rooms to be rented.
Are these finalized rates?
These are proposed.
And they'll they'll come to us at another time to approve?
This will come to you at the twenty seventh meeting. February twenty seventh meeting. This is the structure that we are proposing that the council would adopt. So we gave it to you under items for discussion so that it would be presented to the council and the public in case they want it, in case anybody wanted to address the proposed fees at the public hearing.
Yeah, I I just think that the rates for the Debisky Center seem seem a little low to me. But I don't know what kind of groups you get there, what they can afford. But I think if you run out like the Knights of Columbus or Elks or Moose, I think it's more than that. But I don't know. But we are trying to generate revenue while being reasonable too.
I mean, we do have a two hour minimum for the large room or both rooms. We are going back to the one hour minimum for the small room to accommodate smaller meetings mostly. I think that we do have affordable rates, I would say, and I would argue that that really is where we should maintain to to be. These are increases in rates from where we are right now and but we can certainly, if counsel would like to make a suggestion to increase them, I suppose this I would recommend talking about doing that now again so that you can get public comments on them. Largely, we see people rent the rooms for events, baby showers, bridal showers, family reunions.
Yeah, seems to get along.
Are these fees the same for non residents and residents?
We don't have a different. We have never had a different rate, so we don't here, but
I don't see why we couldn't do that. If you're looking at increasing rates, I wouldn't increase rates for the city of Augsburg. But if you want to do a, you know, a five dollar difference for an out of town, you know, I mean, if someone doesn't live in the city, like we do it for Lockwood, we do it for boat slips. It would be
I agree.
It would be if you're going to do it for one thing, you should do it for all of them. So I mean, if you want to raise rates, don't hit our taxpayers, hit the people that don't live here. I mean,
I agree on the non residents.
We can certainly look at putting that in and having that.
Like even, I don't know, like, what is the increase for the small? It's like a five dollar increase, a couple thousand.
Steve, we're getting on the background noise again.
I don't have the old or the current application with me. I did include what the new application would look like with the new rates. I will provide counsel with the current rates.
Yeah, but I think if we do it for for one entity, we just do it for all of them.
In general, right now and since twenty twenty, we have done just, we really have not, with very few exceptions, allowed two different groups just in an effort to to minimize conflicts and people. So we've just done the combined room and I believe it's thirty dollars an hour, a minimum of two hours, but I I'd have to just go back and look at that. That is unchanged since since we made that change in twenty twenty. After, I believe it was April of twenty twenty when we were allowed to open back up. So these fees are an increase from that. So we can amend this and propose a resident, non resident fee structure. Again, there's no action requested on this this evening. Just thought it would be in everybody's best interest to present it early so that if people wanted to comment on it, they could do so at the public hearing. This is the more meaningful part, I think, to residents and potential renters, all of the cleanup language changes.
Steve, we're getting a lot of noise again. Okay. And this brings us to
I got one more. I had it on because I had one. I based on the monies that are in the request for help under the COVID monies that we gave out to five thousand dollars. The list went on and on, and we don't have anything else to help the people with. And I know that we talked about CDBG grants and that there was a problem with population or something else. Has that changed at all? Can we file them now?
Well, the city is still not eligible for CDBG community community wide, citywide benefits. So for example, we would not be eligible to apply for funding to to do to replace the roof at City Hall because we have not, we don't meet the overall citywide low to moderate income threshold.
Okay. Did you would you consider this? We we we're part of St. Lawrence County. If we teamed up with St. Lawrence County to write these BDG grants, we could get them because there's a hundred and ten thousand people in the county and we're ten thousand of it. So we represent one tenth of it. And I'm sure they would work in tandem with us. I've had some conversations with them and they they are willing to sit down and talk about it. But that might be an avenue to take in order to get to the end result to help the people that need help for their homes and their siding and their windows and furnaces and electrical. We we came to and I and if and if that doesn't work, then then I think we should do it in just a, I mean, pick pick a a four block radius almost anywhere in the city, I think you'll find income eligible. But I know that the county will help, so that there's really no reason for us not to file, especially if we can file under their umbrella. This is where I guess where I'm going.
When the when St. Lawrence County applies successfully for CDBG funds.
They just got two.
If the city of Augsburg does not presently have CDBG funding, like we don't now, all of our residents automatically qualify, assuming they have an eligible project. They automatically qualify being a resident of St. Lawrence County to apply to the county's program.
I know, but they said they would they would specifically, I would be able to, if we had something, I think we could sit down with them and have them actually write one for us. Right with with our within with staff. I think it's worth looking into. I mean, why wouldn't we want to help the citizens fix their homes if we can? And I and I also think that the income guidelines aren't based on the city of Augsburg. If you're grand, if you're proposing to fix up, provide funding to help twenty residents pay for whatever it may be, whatever their desperate needs are for their homes. And those twenty people, you say, are going to be low mod, then you qualify, you're eligible to apply.
Right. So if you define a target area, this is
You don't have to define a target. That's what I'm that as long as your application is is geared toward low and moderate income people, whatever it may be. If you write it for just home improvement, first time home buyers, and you you say these people are going to have to
That's that's true.
Yeah.
There the CDBG housing or homeowner repair program is slightly different than than funding available to help people purchase new homes. But the homeowner repair program that I think Counselor Fisher is referring to, maybe I'm wrong. You do, it does have to be by a target area. So you have to and you have to submit case studies in advance indicating and illustrating, one, a desire to participate, two, the need, and three, the qualifications. So because the funding can only be used on for an income eligible households.
I think we should do something, though. And I think the NOFA is is out or and then there's a very short window or it's coming out soon. So notice the funding availability. So be disappointed if we didn't do something for the fourth year in a row.
So just so I understand, CBDG and working with the county and the city, we would have to target an area in the city of low income? Am I correct in that?
If you did a housing rehabilitation program.
A housing rehabilitation program. And obviously, any citizen, I'm just getting clarity here. I'm any citizen in the city can apply through the county
Correct.
grant process as well.
Correct. So we have done successful housing rehabilitation programs. We've done a few on Ford Street. We've done one on New York Avenue. We've applied unsuccessfully for one on Ford Avenue.
City.
The city of Augsburg. So we, those are just what we've done in in more recent years.
Right, right.
But yeah, I mean, there are also other forms of community development block grant is sort of the umbrella of many other programs. And they all do not have to coincide with a target area to Counsel Reese's point. But for housing rehabilitation, they do.
Yeah, if we can pay twenty five hundred, five thousand dollars to write one for first time home buyers or some other one that doesn't require a target area and get one in this year, it would help a lot of people. Help some people out, not a lot. I I just had an item for discussion. Does the Lockwood Arena get a lot of activity after the ice is out during the summer months and that? Or is it is it just it just if there's a special event? My reason for asking is that pickleball is very popular and they're playing at at the universities in Canton, Potsdam. I think they try to play up to modern day, but it's kind of restricted. Our courts will open up, I guess, Memorial Day weekend outside, but it's very inexpensive to if if the Lockwood Arena isn't being utilized a lot for for rain days or windy days or inclement weather to, you know, once the ice is out, if it's something our recreation director ought to look into because there are quite a few people that have an interest in that.
I think that that actually is something their recreation director just recently inquired about, how to utilize the facility temporarily on and off for those types of things in in the off season. So
I don't even think those
be a recommendation that comes to you in the near future.
Yeah, I don't even think the the universities don't even charge. I think it's whoever shows up puts five bucks out and that's the charge. It's not like you got to rent it for fifty bucks and fill out a form and there's a waiver form. And then you put five dollars on the table. It's very, very easy and anybody can sign up. Very simplified. And yeah, very popular. It might be. I'm glad she's looking into it.
So if it's five dollars for residents, is it ten for non residents?
I don't think so.
Okay, at this time, if anyone intending in person would like to address city council, please come down on the podium and you'll have two minutes.
Just a couple of things. The lighting situation at Montroy Park. I believe them are the original lights in that park that were put in there some twenty five or thirty years ago when we built the park up there. I think there is an dire need of new lights. So whatever you could do, I think would be beneficial for the programs and the youth of this community. Them lights were bought over in Governor Art, the old softball field. And I think they've they've outlasted their their lifespan. Second thing on the proposal of the increase in rates for the community center and activities, has the rec commission been involved in any of that?
No, they so this is primarily changing the fees for the Debisky Center and adding fees for the pool, which
I'm just curious, has has we do we have any input from the rec commission on that? We haven't. This will be on.
No.
Okay, all right.
The rates that are on this form are the current rates for the arena. So those have not, those are not changing. They're just in a consolidated view here.
Well, I just thought that's the rec is responsible for that building. Maybe, you know, just gets a little bit of input. The money for the roof here, that is in your budget now? Or are we, do you think we're going to have to waltz and refinance something to to repair this roof?
All right, I know this is citizen participation, so I don't know how we want to handle this, man.
No, it's not.
It's not? Okay.
That's my my
It's not in the budget?
So at the time of the budget, since we are responding, the staff made very clear that there was no, there were no funds allocated for major capital improvements at any of our facilities. And that we would be bringing proposals to finance them at a later date.
Okay, I would just like to bring up that. I think it was a year and a half ago. Two years ago, there was a an ad taken out in North Country Now. And the ad stated there was five bullet points. And the very first bullet point was if we do away with five firefighters, we'll have enough money to repair that roof. As a taxpayer, I'm just curious where that money went. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The lights at the Montroy Park could be a part of a CDBG grant because they do fund recreation. They they always did and or you could do a Parks and Recreation Grant. They always have grant money available for that.
I just know that if we could do that, they could host a lot more tournaments into the evening hours and the tournaments that they do hold up there does bring in in revenue and those families come in for games and it would open it up. I know the softball field is going to be worked on this year. So there's going to have two dedicated softball program fields for softball programming, which is going to also bring in tournaments for the softball side of it because there's going to be more than one field available at the venue. So the opportunities are there. We just need to hopefully.
We charge fees for that?
Pardon?
Do we charge fees for that?
For what?
The tournaments and stuff?
I'm sure Kiwanis does. They they run the field. They run the tournaments.
Does not charge a fee.
City does not. I mean, I guess if the city hosted a tournament, the city could collect the fees.
I'm not proposing. I was just curious. You said it brought in revenue.
Well, it does, it brings in revenue.
You do have someone at the podium, everyone.
It brings in revenue for the city as far as, you know, shopping.
Hotel.
Hotel, I mean, well, that's outside the city, but you're right.
Yes, please proceed.
Sorry. Okay, that's fine. I'm Barbara O'Keefe. I'm president of Portland Presentation Association, a member of Forsites, the Augsburg Historical Commission, and on board of the Augsburg Museum. And I just want to thank everybody for the resolution and your support. And I wanted to let council and the public know about the events. On Saturday, the eighteenth, at ten o'clock, there will be a um wreath laying ceremony at Sheriff York's grave. And he's the one heroine, hero, and his wife was the heroine of the battle. Uh he manned the cannon at the corner of State and Ford alone after the troops ran off. And it's reported that the British said he was too brave to shoot. The next day, his wife went over to Canada and demanded his release from prison.
Did they release him?
Yes, they did. And the story about him mirrors a myth. Um then at um one fifteen, um James Reagan, uh author of uh The Warriors of Portland Presentation and The Warriors of um Osoga Street, will at the corner of Franklin and Riverside do a synopsis of the war. The battle will start at one thirty. All the streets are still there. Um the route from Franklin to Ford and State. The names have changed a couple, but the streets are still there. Then at um two thirty, you can warm up at the Augsburg History Museum with some coffee. At three o'clock, John Austin, um author of St. Lawrence County, uh Follow and Mist, Follies and Mischief, uh will do a talk at the museum, and that's at two oh six Ford Street. And the battle was two-pronged, so on Sunday, they'll resume at Fort de la Presentation um on Van Rensselaer Lighthouse Point. And that will be at one thirty again, too. So I hope you all are doing, I mean, we're about history also. If you see a red actor, thank them. This is also about tourism. They spend money here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
We do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, adjourned.